It being six o'clock. My name is Bob Green. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals and I will call this meeting to order at this time. Roll call, myself, Bob Green, Pat Androni, Jared Gunlock, Pam Born, Dick Cashwell is participating remotely. Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States, Republic for which it stands.
At this point in time, we move into a public comment. It's an opportunity for anyone to address the planning commission on any issue. There is a time limit of three minutes while the planning commission, I'm sorry, it's not the plan, my apologies, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
That's my mistake.
While the ZBA encourages input from residents, they may not discuss or act on any issue that does not duly notice on the agenda.
We did not have any registered, anyone registered for all the comments.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have this on here, but typically I do verify the publication notice.
Yeah, so the publication, the, the public hearing was notified, was posted both to the Milton, excuse me, Milton Cross Plains Times Review on the 24th of December and 31st of December, as well as being posted on the developer's website and at the developer's hall on the Volton Board for a minimum of two weeks. The affidavits publication, affidavits posting, and the affidavit of mailing of notice is included in your packet. I have it here for example.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point in time, we're going to move into the general business with a regular meeting, a public hearing for a petition from Mr. Kent Stotts for an area variance from Sections 84 Sub 29 Sub G and Statute 84 Sub 73 Sub D of the Village of Cross Plains Municipal Code of Ordinances to allow intrusion into the street side front yard at 2207 Caesar Street, Cross Plains, Wisconsin. Before we move into this, since we do have a fair number of members who are doing this for the first time, I'll talk just briefly about what we're doing. In this particular case, we're looking for an area variance. An area variance is, is a modification to a dimension, physical or locational requirements such as a setback, frontage height, bulk, or density restriction for a structure that is granted by the Board, you know, that would be granted by the Board of Appeals. So basically, what we're looking for, what is being asked for, is a variance to the existing statutes. As we move into that, just briefly, an area variance applicant must show that it complies with the strict letter of the restrictions governing areas, setbacks, frontage, height, bulk, density, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. We'll get into more of that, but if you wanted to talk about the application at this time?
Sure. So just a quick reminder to the board, I know that this board has not met for some time here. And the Board of Zoning Appeals is indeed a quasi-judicial body, and thus, the decision is made by this board that's in precedence in the future for similar requests and decisions to be made. So therefore, the decisions that are made and the findings of facts should be based on fact and on the existing ordinances and statutes that are currently in hand. And any appeals from this board would then go to the second court. So again, it is a quasi-judicial, which is different from a legislative body. With that being said, the application was, had been submitted by Mr. Stotts. The address of the property is 2207 Caesar Street. And what the applicant is asking is basically to enclose the front porch area for living space and adding additional living space on top, on the, on the second floor. If you give me a minute here, I can, I can pull up the map here for where we've asked for the property of the applicant to identify the property line and detail the addition. And so you'll see on the board and on the, the site, I mean, on the meeting, Zoom meeting here, that this is a certified map of the property itself. Caesar Street being on the right, in Julia Street on the bottom here. The porch or a section of the home that we are discussing for which the applicant has desires to, to make improvements to is this yellow highlighted area. And as you can see, from the property line to the front of the porch currently is 17.8 feet. The porch is south 68 feet from the main building, giving you a total of 25.8 feet, which currently does meet the village's site, street setback restriction of 25 feet, meaning that, that the building should be at least 25 feet from the property line. And then from Caesar Street, which is also a, a street yard. It's not clear here whether or not that is less than or greater than 25 feet. You can see that the closest section to Caesar Street is kind of this bump out here, and that is approximately 18.4 feet. So I do address that too in, in the memorandum that I sent you, in that structures that were in place before the village adopted the, the current zoning code, which I believe was 1913, could potentially be determined as non-conforming or grandfathered in. And that, you know, at the time the zoning code was adopted, it was, it didn't meet the new code restriction. However, there is an underlying segment in the code that states that should a structure be non-conforming, any changes or additions thereof to it should be brought into conformance of the current zoning code unless a variance is granted. So back to the original discussion surrounding the porch. As it currently lays, it is conforming in that it meets the 25-foot setback. The zoning code also excludes porches that are not enclosed in allowing that in that 25-foot setback. That's not a concern here. Or excuse me, that is, that is applies here also. But in regards to what the applicant wants to do in, in closing the porch, you know, here now to the pictures that you've taken. My understanding, you know, the applicant is here tonight. If you have any questions thereof, and Mr. Stotts, if, I mean, correct, feel free to correct me here. My understanding of the project is that the applicant's desire is to close, to close this front porch area for a bedroom and a bathroom. Well, I mean, room and bathroom, you know, and then the top area here to also be closed for the bedroom.
Bedroom and bathroom.
And a bathroom. And so by enclosing it, the code currently does not fix or allow for the inclusion of living space within the setback area. And by turning it into a portion of the main building for living space would be in violation of the 25-foot requirement. Here you can see how that, that building lines up with the rest of the properties down the block here. That, you know, they're pretty close in line as to the front of their buildings. This is the, the bump out that we had talked, identified earlier, this being approximately 18 feet from that property line. And then this is just another picture looking down from Caesar Street. This is from Julia Street looking north. The unique thing about this property is that I believe once upon a time it used to have two different entrances and two different addresses. There is a Caesar Street address here, excuse me, a Julia Street address here, and a Caesar Street address from right here. And then as part of agenda packet, this provides the requirement that Board of Zoning Appeals would have to review in consideration of what is being asked if there, an area variance to allow that intrusion into the, the front, the side streets that that to allow for the applicant to, to, yeah, or to construct an addition that they see.
Is that house, is that porch, does that have to be removed?
Is your microphone? Oh, okay, I can't even go.
Does the porch have to be removed because of the structure underneath if you're going to do a two-story addition? I mean, what's the foundation under a porch compared to the house? Does it need, would that even need a code?
Yeah, so we, we currently do not have any plans at this point yet. This is simply a hearing to decide the zoning use and allowances for that. If the difference is measured, we would require that the applicant also submit building plans and that the building plans are forthcoming, they, you know, from zoning code. I would imagine, and again, I don't know what is currently there now and how the findings are set, but I would imagine that that would be something that the, the building and such everyone review as part of the approval process.
And actually, Pam, that's a very good question, because at that particular point, we'd need to be attached to the home. While possibility that the porch may or may not have been permanently attached on with my footage, but this would be permanently attached to the home.
To support a second level?
To support a second level, yeah.
Foundation. Is that a two-flat house?
My understanding, from looking at that history, is that it used to be a single-family now.
Ever since Dad ended up, he rented it out upstairs, so. I don't know when the house before he bought it, but it's been 60 years since I was old.
I have a question, it's in regards to like sewer lateral, water, gas, where does that approach the building? And would that become into, does the sewer lateral return to Julia Street, does it return to Caesar Street?
Caesar, Caesar.
Caesar Street?
Yeah, first of all, these are all really good questions, because they're questions that I had as well. But I know at this particular point. And please, help me with this as well, is, is more of the fact that the code basically states that there needs to be a 25-foot setback from the house to the front of the property line. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish your statement.
No, I'm, I'm finished, Tom.
My thing with it is that everything would have to be in the perimeters. I think if we okayed something like this, everything would have to be in the perimeters of where the porch is now. Everything could not increase in size. And the top floor is going to go up to match the roof there now, Kim?
What?
The top piece is going to go up to match.
I don't think it's going to go up. I don't think it might go up. And there'll be, I'll, I'll just cut it off for that being moved across.
Right there?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's not going to change the structure in front of the house.
No, no, okay. But.
And the reason I'm bringing that up is because you've got something there now that's there and it's open. But I'm still thinking that, been there for a while, it's going to beautify the house, make it look better, and be an accomplishment. And we do have a lot of places in town where I can go around to that were less than 20 feet from the, from the corners and stuff like that, because in the old days, we did not have the wall.
Right.
And I'm thinking, as long as there's a structure there now, as long as he replaces exactly where it's at, that it would be okay to me, but he's got to replace it exactly where it's at. You can't expand.
Right, but the issue that comes into is, right now, it's a non-conforming. It doesn't conform with existing.
He evidently had a variance at some time.
Well, were you able to find variance?
There wasn't a variance in the file.
But where I'm going with this is, is the way the rules read is that you, once you have a non-conforming structure and you go and get a building permit, and please, you help me with this, because I'm not an expert in this. It has to, whenever you make the change, then it has to conform to existing zoning laws. And this would not, you would not be able to make it conform because of the distance from the property line. So.
Yeah, that, that's, that's correct. So there, there is a section within the code that talks particularly to non-conforming or grandfathered structures. And that it's the onus of, it's, the, it's up to the applicant to prove to this board that one, they need a variance and that the variance, and if, if not a second, would cause an undue hardship to the, and that that undue hardship does not cause by the applicant. And so, I think that's, that's the test here. You know, if we lay, if we lay it out here, it, it's a non-conforming, which if, if it gets, if it gets taken down and it's replaced exactly as it is, you can do that. It's allowed in that zoning code. However, if you want to make an addition to it, you need to meet the current code, or you need an S part of it.
He's asking for a current.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I could see a variance here as long as it never perpetuated the addition. It never went further than what it is now.
The only thing I might do is put it out to the east side of the house. That's all I can do. It's probably about that far.
I still think you got to do it exactly where it's at.
Okay, well, then that's.
I mean, that's just to keep everything in mind.
But then the issue that you run into is, and I'll let Phil talk about this, is that as we're quasi-law, you know, in terms of, we're actually a court. So we actually have to follow strictly interpret the rules. So if you could really talk a little about the duty of the Zoning Board of Appeals in terms of enforcing in terms of the rules and such that. So I think one statement here, city or, or, or village zoning board of appeals abuses its power to routinely grant zoning variances requests, you know, based on certain circumstances, they need to be a very strict interpretation for this type of variance and area variance. If you can possibly talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, that, that is correct.
Okay, can I ask a question?
When, but in finishes it, okay, you'll get a chance. My problem is right there.
Yeah, that, that is correct, that, again, this, this, this board acts essentially as a court in interpreting what is currently the zoning code and what is allowed under state statutes to grant a variance. And that it is not a legislative body in that you can make policy. In ideal world, if a number of variances are being granted over one particular issue, say, for example, a setback, it should be a legislative decision at the planning commission level and at the Board level to actually change the zoning code. If that is, if that is, can be a larger issue. So, you know, that, that's one thing to keep in mind in that just like case law, decisions made at this level can be dependent upon by future applicants as an interpretation of the law, unless it goes on to or is appealed to the second court and the court system, and they decide differently.
Mr. Stotts?
Okay, no, I forgot you. I didn't produce, but.
Thank you, now that. My apologies, we should be.
Yeah, that might, that might should pick up, Kim, if you want to step up to the podium.
Sorry, this is for other people who are listening in on this. We have one of, one of the board members has participated remotely, so I'm not sure if he can do what he has to say.
Okay, no, no problem. But now, and that house on Church Street, that's being built, that's only 10 feet.
That should be 25 feet.
It's 10 feet. I couldn't even measure that. Bring that up to the board once.
No, I have to reach out to the document inspector.
But I'm just saying, you know, I'm not, I'm on either, but we got by with that, why couldn't I give it by with mine, I'm saying.
Well, in that case, you know, in, in that case, we did not approve a variance for them. So if they are, are within 25 feet of that setback area, they are in violation of the code. So, so, so let you know, the village's board did not, or the, the Board of Zoning Appeals did not grant a variance for them.
So I was reading the county zoning book, the manual, and there was language in there that talked about, so if we didn't approve this variance, would it make the house not usable? And that would not be true here, because the house is usable. It's a change.
What, what you're talking about, yeah, is talking about the hardship aspect.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a note saying, because that, basically, for a variance to be granted, we have to, we have to look at three items, unnecessary hardship, which is what you're talking about, unique physical property limitations, and no harm to public interest. In this particular case, you're talking about unnecessary hardship. That, and that would be by standard, so basically, Mr. Stotts, you need to demonstrate that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance would unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the properties, using his property for a permitted purpose, or would render conformity with the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. So basically, the question becomes is, and again, please correct me, because it's been a long time since I've done this. Right now, he's currently using his home as it's zoned for. And therefore, the variance, the current zoning ordinances are not preventing him from using his home as it's currently zoned. And so if I'm correct, and so right now, the ordinances, the current ordinances and the strict interpretation of ordinances do not prevent him from using his home as it's right now. And I'm trying to do a good job explaining, so if there's anything else you need to.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. That's one thing that the board should look at is if, in the case that the variance is not granted, would the property still be able to be used in the, for, in the first process directed by the zoning district currently? And so the current, I believe the current district is presidential four, which allows for a single-family and I believe two flat. It, it's currently being used as that now, in the, you know, so the, you know, the, the potential here to add a bedroom, bathroom, washroom, doesn't necessarily impede on the property's ability to continue to be used as a residential structure.
And another thing is Caesar Street is this right here, and I'm 25 feet from there. That's my address. So I don't know if you go by my address or, because I'm on the corner.
It's 25 feet from, from any side.
Yeah.
Street side here.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm.
Because you live on a corner.
Yeah, right.
It requires you to be 25 feet from both Caesar Street and from Julia Street. And that's, that's not unique to the property that's the same across all residential.
Really, what I'm confused about, you know, what makes the difference by closing it or not? I mean, it's going to make the house look much better, you know?
Yeah, so the difference is, is the change in, in the use, you know, so.
Yeah, we, we use that deck anyways. Are you seeing up there, Doc?
I, I understand.
You know, I'm, I'm sure Doc had it really up there years and years and years ago.
And that's, that's exactly the point, in that the, the use on a porch or a deck like that is minimal. It's an accessory use. And so by enclosing it, it's for a living space, habitable space, you're using it more often.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah, for sure.
And the reason why setbacks were established were, were due to health and safety and privacy, et cetera, and the list goes on. But once upon a time, the decision makers of the village decided and adopted a code. So that's, that's kind of what we have to, to deal with now.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, if it is enclosed, let's say you went forward with this, the upstairs, it looks like that's a patio door, which is a.
That's the lock. That, I, I put all the new windows and doors and vinyl siding in this whole place, new shovels, new gutters. But I didn't put two new doors in, because I figured, I'm going to remind them why I spent $2,000 on each door.
But is it, is it an exit or a fire? Is a second?
It is an exit fire, but I mean, a door is near a lock. Nobody can use that door right now.
Well, if it's a fire, if it's for a fire exit, I would think you've got to, you have to incorporate that yet too, into that new plan. If it's, if it's a purpose of getting out for a fire on the second story rental.
Yeah.
So is that going to expand further out yet too?
No, 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 we won't guarantee that. It won't.
So I just want to bring, I just want to bring the board back to a section in regards to non-conforming uses. A particular section in the code where it talks about changing a non-conforming use. And here it states, except that permitted in subsection D, which is the discontinuance of non-conforming use, or subsection B three above, which is, which talks about the issuance of conditional use permit or amendment to the, the, the conforming status, status, that a non-conformant use shall not be expanded, enlarged, extended, or reconstructed unless the use is changed to a use permitted in the district in which it is located. There is another section here that talks about maintenance and repair for the non-conforming use. And, you know, that's just that. And when we talk about making repairs, you know, making changes back to the, the original purpose of that, that accessory that was there previously.
So perhaps just to expand upon what you said there. The porch is right now a non-conforming structure that at one time may have been built with or without permission. We have many different, it's a small village, you know, it's much smaller at one time. It may have been built without a permit. We don't know. We don't have records. No branch was asked for. But at this particular time, what you're stating is the rules state that when we have a non-conforming part of the building, and if somebody wants to change the use of that from what it was, from what it is currently to something different, then that use must conform with existing rules that we have in place.
Correct. And so, you know, two things to think about this, one is the use aspect, because you're changing from an accessory use to a primary use. One is the use aspect because you're changing from unnecessary use or primary use. And then two is, is the area variance at the setback and physically where that structure is within that setback, that setback range. And so you're, you're kind of making a, a change to the both of them, which is in respect, kind of activating the need for the variance. So that's, that's what I was saying.
Yeah. Yeah, so now, the reason we're here is because this portion of the building was built into the area non-conformant.
Correct.
And at that time, when it was built, evidently it wasn't non-conformant or we'd have found some kind of variance.
Well, it could, it could have been conforming at the time.
Or conform, yeah, and, and so, I guess my biggest thing is, is the other thing said no harm to the public interest. I don't see where that would affect the public interest. I guess I don't see anybody here saying, don't let them do this.
The only concern, and first of all, recognize what you're saying, Pat. If it was, if we are only a photograph, you know, like you have motion picture versus a photograph. If this is only a photograph and is a one-time situation, it would never apply again to any other building or any other home inside the building across plane, you'd be correct. But what happens is because we are quasi law, a court of law, we establish case law. And then case law would basically state that by allowing this to occur, the next person could come up and say, no different than what you said was happening on this, you know, the street, Church Street.
Church Street, yeah.
Saying, well, since they allowed it here, then you should allow here. And the case law starts building up piece by piece every time you make a variance, without following the law because what you're doing is basically stating the rule makers who made this, the village board, made this particular ordinance. And we're not allowed to grant variances to that. And if we establish enough variances to that, we basically overturn the law. That's not our case. That's up to the village board to make that change. So again, I'm probably clumsy in the way I explain this, so if there's something that could.
All right, well.
I guess, I guess my, my whole question to that would be, we aren't, if somebody was coming in new and wanted to do something like this and add to their property, I would say that would be a structure that is questioning everything. This is something that's there, and I realize it's only a porch, but you're not expanding. And that's what kind of, and I said, if people in the neighborhood would object to it, I think we'd see somebody here. I just, I guess my whole thing is these houses are, what, how, Kim, how old is that house? Eighty years?
Hundred, hundred.
Hundred years old?
Says, maybe nineteen, eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds, one or two.
And I think it'll clean up the neighborhood by fixing it up.
My dad would be mad at me because I didn't build that a house.
And, and that's just my, I guess that's where I'm coming from. It's an existing structure that's been there for years and years. Now, if somebody new comes in and wants to add to their house or wants to do something like that, we're not changing that law.
Yeah, but you actually are.
We're not.
And I'm not, and this is not part of the discussion because I'm not, I don't have the ability to say what's right or wrong. I'm just a chair, making sure that the meeting runs.
No, and I'm just, that's, and I'm not trying to, my belief is that when, if something's there and I don't see conflict to it, I have a problem. I don't have a problem saying no to somebody that comes in and says, I want to build a house 20 yards off the street. That's a different case. And that's just my opinion, and I could be wrong, but it's just a.
So, you know, I think, I think we're starting to kind of dive into a little bit of policy here.
Right, you can do a rabbit hole.
And I want to encourage the, the board of zoning appeals here that, you know, there, there are standards for, for which to approve a variance upon. And those are spelled out clearly in state statute and, and in ordinance. And so, again, I just want to bring your attention to the state statute here. The state said a property owner bears the burden of proving unnecessary hardship as the term is used in this subdivision for an area variance. And that by demonstrating that, that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance would unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property owner's, the property owner's property for a permitted purpose, or would render conformity with the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome or, or a variance by demonstrating. So I think the language is pretty clear there. And you, you know, the property owner has to prove that there's an unnecessary hardship and that by strict compliance of the zoning ordinance, they would not, they would unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property as, as a permitted purpose in the current zoning ordinance. And, you know, the information that, that, that I have here, unless, you know, there's something that I'm missing, I think that there's enough information here for the board to make that decision.
Before I go, Dick, I just want to make sure that you're able to speak.
No, I have a, I have one question. When's the last time that property was purchased?
The purchase?
Yeah.
By, by my dad?
Correct, yeah, that was the last.
I'd say in the fifties.
Okay. At the time it was purchased, was the purchaser aware of the non-compliance with the zoning that existed at that time?
I couldn't tell you.
Then the, the zoning code changed in 2013, I believe, there's, there's about.
Okay.
Because we put that addition on in August on, we put that on in the seventies. So I know that for sure.
Go ahead, you were going to speak.
No, 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 that's the addition, August on, with various places, that was put on in the seventies.
Right. Yeah, and actually, Phil and I discussed that just when I first came in, I asked about that because was that the entranceway?
Yeah, yeah.
So they basically just filled in the entranceway.
Yeah. So the address was right, you're in the driveway. But the address is, that's why a lot of people get lost. It was 227 C Street, right here, and there's no door, you know, but there used to be a door there.
I have one other comment. In the documents that were sent to us, there is a list of six questions that need to be considered in whether to adopt a variance or not. And the person who submitted it indicated that all of those were true. But I don't agree with that from just that. And I think that the board needs to consider each of those as to whether the statements that are made are indeed correct. I mean, one, two, three, and four, I think are wrong the way they're listed. I'm not sure about six. I think five certainly is true.
I'm actually going to agree with you, Dick, because I'm looking at my notes on that as well. So I, I think your, your particular point is a good one. And I'm going to encourage the, the board at this particular time, I think we'll start. What he's referencing to is on the variance application, the second page, standards for variance.
Yeah, I can bring that up.
Yeah, I'll wait till it comes up to him. There we go. So, and then get along with it.
Yeah, so, so we have an application process that we have applicants for, for variance allowed, yeah. When, when Mr. Suss had shown interest in a variance, we met and we discussed the application to get a system and filling out the front page, which is the basic information here and from what, what section of the code he would be asking a variance from. But at that point, I, I surrendered over the, the rest, the remainder of the application for him to complete. And this is what was returned to me. So, yeah, you know, it's not exactly what I, what I thought would have been submitted for each application. But we do have Mr. Suss here and he may be able to explain the reasons for the way he answered these questions.
So the first question is, there are conditions unique to the property of the applicant that do not apply generally to other properties in the district. You had answered true.
This is your application. If you, if you could give me that back after you're done.
Oh, we'll get back here, we'll do this right now.
No, 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 no.
Sorry, yeah?
There, so right now we are reviewing these questions. So we're reviewing your answers to them. And that you wrote true to each of them.
Yeah.
And the board's gonna ask you why you believe it's true.
Okay.
So I, I can't say that there is one of the situations that is, conditions that are unique to your property is the fact that it's a corner lot. But there are many corner lots in, 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 in the village. So other than it being a corner lot, what conditions are unique to your property that would not generally apply to other properties in, you know, in our zoning district?
All right, that's all true.
I understand.
Yeah, make it look better, my point of view, but.
Okay. So basically improve. Oh, improve appearance is what you're saying.
Yeah.
My other question would be, I can see where Dick's thinking this is not true answer. But there is other corner lots that are in very, various conditions that are close to the streets and closer than they should be in their older homes. I mean, they're just older homes in districts. So that technically, there are other houses on corners that are out there that are imploding on the conditions of the variance.
Right, but again, we're just looking at a strict interpretation.
Well, I think you're, you're talking about his property. He, he, you could say, yeah, that is directly to other properties in the district. It probably does match up to other properties.
Okay. So what we're looking for is what's unique about his property that a law of variance occur?
I think any house that we have on a corner can check that.
I, I wanna, I wanna just take a step back here. The, the, the burden, the burden of proof is on the applicant. So, I, I don't want, I don't want the board to feel like you need to make, you need to justify.
All right.
Or not, or no.
Dick was asking why it was true.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to give an answer.
But, but yeah, you need to get the answer.
Well, I, I just wanted to restate that because we, as a, as a judicial court, we should not be looking for reasons for or, or not. And that we're, we're simply hearing the case here and making a decision based off, based off the facts and statutes. And again, you know, I want to keep the board out of trouble here in the future and that, you know, it's clearly that. So, again, we should not be making, or providing for reasons as the verdict is on the applicant.
Yes, I think, just for my clarification, I think what Pat is saying is, yes, there's other properties that in, there been infringed upon this, but at this point, they're not asking to make improvements upon it. So I need to make a decision based upon this simple case of, yes, he intrudes upon it right now, but we need to make a decision based upon the fact that he needs to make improvements. Want, with wanting to make improvements on it. Am I correct in saying that?
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. We're looking at the first question, says there are conditions unique to this property, only this piece of property not.
Right, and just, just to play a little bit devil's advocate with Pat. Pat's statement is, yes, there are other properties infringed upon this, but this is a case by case.
Case by case basis, yeah.
Nobody else that has property infringed right now, besides your grandfather in the town, is asking for improvements upon them.
Right, and that actually goes back to case law where we have to be careful about.
I just wanted to bring that up for my.
No, 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 and I'm actually glad to do it because it's helping me to see.
I'm gonna run ahead on this.
No, I'm doing the same thing. I'm trying to figure this out. And in fact, the whole case law thing, if, if we start bringing in other cases that are not being discussed here right now, who are actually creating case law that is it, we don't have that information from, we don't have that from. We can only make a decision based upon what we have in front of us.
And all I was trying to show was that the answer is probably why the deck that he put true in there was because, you know, you have to look at the whole application.
Right. But in this particular case, what we, all we can do is just go and actually have it. So before we move on, since there's been a fair amount of discussion on question one, is there any else I have done that you want to improve the appearance of the property?
Yeah.
For question one, is there any other information you want to add to number one? Number two, the variance is not contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulations in the zoning district, is not contrary to the public interest and that substantial justice will be done if awarded. So I, I guess in this particular case, other than true, is there additional information you want to give us in terms of that?
Not really.
No other information? Anybody else have questions? Dick, do you have any questions?
No, I, I disagree with the answer that's given, but.
Right, but he's, I'm just asking if he has any additional information. At this particular point, we're gonna go to number three. For an area setbacks, et cetera, variances, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be, would unreasonably prevent use of the property for its permitted purpose or would render compliance with the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome?
I don't think it would, my point of view.
Would not. Pat, Jared, Pam, or Dick, any questions before we move on?
No.
Okay, number four, the alleged difficulty or hardship is created by the terms of the ordinance rather than by the person who has a present interest in the property. Kind of difficult to wrap your head around.
Yeah. Just to do improvements, it's the only thing I can think.
See, that, my apologies.
Do improvements?
New improvements, your, your answer is. The hardship that's being created by this ordinance is it doesn't allow you to improve your property? I don't want to put words in.
No, 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 improve the property. I mean, if you had just all down the road, it's gonna be worth more money. You don't say I have a rotten porch.
Questions? Okay. Number five, the proposed variance shall not create substantial detriment to adjacent property.
I don't think it should. That's my theory.
No, I understand. Questions? Okay.
Hello, can you guys hear me and my, mic here?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm sorry, we were on late, so.
You introduce yourself and, and provide your address and your interest in that, okay?
Uh, yep, 2041 Julia Street. Mike, Mike or Michael Starr, I'm neighbor.
Good.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just on late, sorry. So on number five, did you guys already show the outline? I know that Kim's kind of brought some of this up to me and, in, in general, it sounds okay, but I, I really haven't seen an outline. And if you've already shown it, we can wait, that's fine, but we were just.
That's fine, for the, for the purposes of this discussion, we can, we can show. So again, this is the, the front porch area for which he intends to enclose for living space, both on the first floor and the second floor. So where the porch is, where the porch is currently.
It were, the second floor, so same footprint for the ground level.
Mike, we're currently discussing standards for variance. Number five, the proposed variance shall not create substantial detriment to adjacent property. Are you here to address that particular issue? Are you here to address that particular issue?
Yes, I'm an adjacent, adjacent property, and I'm just trying to understand what the, what the build is that he's planning on doing. I understand it's at the porch and it's just gonna be two-story, that's all, same footprint as the porch is currently.
That's, that's what was proposed in the application, correct?
Okay, sorry to interrupt, sounds good. We'll continue here, um, as far as, uh, number five, no problem.
Okay, so you, you have no problem. You have, you don't, you don't feel this will create a substantial detriment to, uh, your property?
Nope, if it's the same height and footprint as the current porch, I, I don't have an exception to that.
Mike, can you clarify that as part of the proposal would, would be a second story to that porch area?
Um, that's what I understood from what you guys explained here a moment ago, right? Porch would turn into enclosed space plus you would have enclosed space above as a second story in the same footprint.
Okay, I just wanna make that clear of your comment.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks for double checking on that.
Any further questions before we move forward?
So there's another neighbor. Have you talked to the others?
Well, I can. I can complain. I have one closet.
Oh.
And so I get that, like, should I have to ask the library? Right next door, right? I get, I mean, how far do you, how far do you go? Go three thirty meters on the other way?
So, I, I think we're, okay, I'm sorry, if, I, I have a few more comments just in the general discussion, but I'll wait, because it's not in reference to number five.
Okay. Let's, uh, any further comments on number five? Let's move to the number six. The proposed branch shall be compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. Answered true. Uh, I don't see a reason. Change that, because we can't comment on it, because we don't have plans on what the appearance would be. So, um, that's my opinion. Dick? You have any questions on that?
No, like I say, I, I have, find it hard to judge whether it would affect the character of the immediate neighborhood. I know what the neighborhood looks like. And I, I'm not really sure of it, what they mean by the character of the immediate neighborhood.
It's almost a plan issue, but anyway, um.
I think, just for our information, I think, I think that, that last question is that he keeps it all inside the frames that are going on now. He doesn't widen it past, everything's gonna be inside that panel that's there now.
Yeah, but then we go back to the non-conforming versus conforming. Once you make addition to it, the non-conformant structure has to conform to existing regulations. So even if the footprint stays the same, it's still not matching the existing licenses, because you have to make it conform at that time. You can't because of the distance.
My thought is, looking at, it's a hundred-year-old house, that's probably a cinder block type structure under there. All that's gonna have to probably come off. And your building, you basically are a new building. Even if you say stay in that footprint, you know, cinder block is not gonna be cold today.
Well, no, they're gonna have to do new.
Footings and everything, which means the porch kind of comes off.
But what I'm saying is the footings remain inside the building now. They match, they don't go outside. I mean, that, uh, what, everything goes the same, the footings go up. But what I'm talking about is the peak of the house, and then there's a thing that that has to stay.
Everything stays out of the existing.
Right, existing.
Right, but I think what Pam is bringing up, and I don't want to put words in people's mouth, is that you're making, if indeed it's cinder block, which is outside of our discussion, if indeed it's cinder block, it'll be a new foundation, which is a new build. Which will bring us back into the non-conforming, but we are actually there even if we could use the existing cinder blocks. But the question's a good question. Okay, so we're through one through six at this particular point in time. Um, Mike, you said you got time?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, um, so I didn't have much time to study this prior to the conversation. What's the specific variance, or a specific issue with the ordinance that he's not complying with?
Yeah, so the, the issue at hand is that the side street frontage and the front yard requires a twenty-five-foot setback uh, from the property line. Currently, depending on how you would look at this, in that the front porch, uh, isn't currently an intrusion into, uh, what would be side street, yard. And again, I can show the survey map here. So it's currently about, seventeen point eight feet from the property line from Julia Street, for which the current code allows for an open porch intrusion as an inclusion. The main building itself is complying with the code because it's more than twenty-five feet bad. Uh, and then we also address the eighteen feet distance from Caesar Street, and that is non-compliant, so I'm sure what it's just grandfathered in. So by enclosing.
One, one, one more time about that, uh, eighteen-four bill?
Uh, it would be non-conforming, a non-conforming structure, because it was, it was built before the zoning code, uh, the current zoning code was enacted.
Okay, all right, I understand this, you better now.
So by changing the porch from an accessory use to a, to living space, which would be primary, it would be, you know, then encroaching within twenty-five feet that's required to be set back from the, from Julia Street.
So, prior to the zoning codes, um, establishing the twenty-five feet, what was the setback? Or, or, or the, the porch is an exception to that. The house, how far is the house? So eight feet more in that?
So the house itself is twenty-five point eight feet away from.
Oh, so the house complies and the porch was an exception in the code at the time?
It's an, it's an exception in the code now.
Yeah, and an exception now. So, um, Bill, would you be able to say, is the ordinance informed based on a local building code, or was it just simply made up by the village from a consultant, or I'm just curious where the twenty-five feet came from?
I believe twenty-five feet was a place before.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't do the history search on this, but the twenty-five feet, uh, front setback for residential districts is a pretty common setback. Setbacks are determined to, uh, for health and welfare and for public safety and for privacy issues.
Sure, no, I understand. I, I was just, um, they call those, um, what are those, conforming codes, like the IBC or things like this, right? And then they push those, some districts adopt them and whatnot, so I didn't know if we happened to adopt a certain zoning um, that is nationwide or something. I, I, I just wonder about the twenty-five feet in general. I know on this corner, this has been a discussion of mine for a different residence, and I appreciate the safety standards, that makes sense. But I, I can, the, the height of that porch already is pretty tall. I know it's open, so I kind of see the porch aspect to it. Yeah, I don't know. Um, I said, me personally, it doesn't, um, harm me, but I can appreciate the safety aspect, and I'll, I'll leave it to you guys being the zoning and ordinance experts to decide if this is really, um, safety is weighed by doing this. But, um, yeah, I, I, it seems like in the foot, same footprint, and I can see where that would be not a big deal and, and from a neighbor's standpoint.
Do you have any further comments for Mike?
Nope, um, thanks for pausing to catch us up.
Oh, no worries. Uh, certainly, uh, wanna make sure this, this is very transparent as we move forward. Trying to find my old copy of the zoning ordinances, if I have that, but I'm unable to locate it quickly, so. I'll stop my search. Um, at this particular point in time, we've gone through the standards for the variance. Uh, we have, let's quickly go through the answers we have at this time. Uh, number one, um, conditions unique to the property of the applicant that do not apply generally to other properties. The answer was, you know, he wanted to improve the appearance of the particular home, uh, the property. The, number two, the variance is not contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulations in the zoning district, is not contrary to the public interest, and that substantial justice will has no information, uh, no information was offered by Mr. Stotts on number two. Number three, for an area setbacks, et cetera, variances, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would unreasonably prevent use of the property for permitted purpose or would render compliance with the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome? This particular one, you stated, Mr. Stotts, you didn't feel that it would.
So I don't think it hurt it, my point of view.
Okay, um, this is actually probably the whole process of what we're gonna be working on this. But could you perhaps just talk a little bit about this?
So, and number three?
Yeah. I think this is what we're gonna probably make our decision on.
Correct. So, this, number three, so, uh, discusses, uh, the limitations for an area setback, which is being requested of, uh, that a compliance with strict letter of the law, so the twenty-five-foot setback uh, would unreasonably prevent the use of the property, uh, for a permitted purpose uh, or would render the compliance with ordinary unnecessarily for, for, burdensome.
But this is done residential, so.
Yeah, so I wanna break that down first, where we talked about permitted purpose. And so currently, it is zone as residential, the property is being used as residential, and whether the decision is to approve the variance or deny the variance does not change the fact that the property will continue to be used as residential. Uh, and so it is properly zoned as residential for the purpose intended. The next person discusses that, uh, strict letter of, of compliance, um, would make the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. Uh, the applicant stated that it would not, uh, this part of the question tries or attempts to answer, uh, yeah, whether or not the code is correct, uh, in its restriction, compared to the bar of what is unnecessarily burdensome. And so, um, again, in this case, the zoning code in the residential district, um, gives a restriction of twenty-five feet from the streets, uh, in order to build within that building envelope. Uh, and the applicant, um, hasn't shown that, that if that was strictly, complied to the letter of the law, that it would, it would be a burden on top of the, the use of the property currently.
I'll present, just to look it through. So, in this particular case, would you interpret? Because he's basically applying for us to, if we follow the strict letter of the law, which has a twenty-five-foot, uh, setback, by us applying this to his application, would it unreasonably prevent him the use of his property as it's currently zoned? Or would the compliance with this ordinance be particularly burdensome?
Correct.
Okay, that seems to be the question that we're actually asking right now at this particular time. So, before we move any further, I guess, Mr. Stotts, I'd like to run it through you again as well, is, is, so you understand we're focusing on this particular question, if there's any additional information you would like to supply. And I understand this is confusing and burdensome for you as an individual because of the fact that this is your property, it's been in the property, you know, for your family for a very long time.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, we're looking at it from a macro length, not just the length of the particular property. So, um, is there any new information that you'd like to provide to us to help us in doing before on this decision?
I'm not ready.
Already, um, at this particular point, I did just take a quick.
I looked for a raise hand button on this, I don't see one. Yeah.
So this is Mike?
This is Mike, yes, and.
Because we have other people on here other than yourself. So if you could just identify yourself as you want.
Yeah, Mike, this is Mike, uh, four one Julia Street.
Yeah.
For the number three. I'm just curious is, if this stays within the same footprint and it is new living space for those two stories? As far as the, would there be any porch-like front area? I'm just wondering, because the standard right now would say that if we, if within the footprint of your porch, you make two-story living, that necessarily in the future, you might be able to put on a porch, because it's a current exception in the ordinance. Uh, I just, I'm curious that within the same footprint first, and that there wouldn't be a future porch on that side, and even with it in the current footprint now, would there be front extending stairs, if that makes sense, as to be beyond the footprint that is now?
Yeah, so, you know, so that's, that's a lot of digesting into potential, you know, future build outs. And I think, I think right now, the board is trying to answer quite honestly, the, 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 the more subtle question is whether or not to allow the setback and to allow the intrusion to the setback for, for livable space, um.
It's just, just so you know, my, my apologies here. Mike, you're part of, part of the discussion. That porch is a non-compliant, that was grandfathered in. And the ordinance states that if you make modifications to a non-compliant edition, it has to comply with existing ordinances. So as it sits right now, and it's not compliant with what it was grandfathered in, it makes any changes to it, then the equation starts all over again, and then I'll let you go.
Yes, so just, so whether it's, it's not compliant or, or compliant, and I believe if you read so, so the include, or the, the inclusions, the exceptions to the, the front yard setback, so depending on how you look at this property, uh, there's no exceptions to the side yard, side street setback. Uh, so if you, if you look at this from that, that Julia Street is the front yard, it allows an exception for the open porch to include in twenty-five feet. If you look at it from Caesar Street being the front yard, then the intrusion on Julia Street is a, uh, non-conforming, uh, structure. In either way, in, in, in either, uh, of those, the current code requires a twenty-five-foot setback for the main building. For any kind of special area, it, it does not have any of those exclusions in it. Uh, so, again.
Is this an R one?
This is a R four.
It's a R four, right, thank you.
So from, from your question, Mike, you know, could, could the, the property owner ask for variance here and then include a porch or steps, et cetera, onto that, into the setback area? You know, I think those are good questions, and I think that those are definitely considered by. I think those are good questions and I think that those are definitely considered when the policymakers were setting the setback requirement for this. You know, how far does that go? And so, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, if you continue, you know, just say, for example, the applicant, the disclaimer is granted, you know, could they come back in and ask for another variance? They very well could. And so that's why I encourage that the board make a decision based off of the interpretation of the current law and not continue to make changes or make, make variances. In that by, you know, the continuation of, of additional variances is thereby changing the policy. And so again, that's, that's a policy decision is meant for the ability to, and the ability to.
And Mike, would you just speak? I actually have a copy of the 2012 ordinances and there's not an R4 district at this time, it is basically an R2 and R1. And they both basically state that for the street yard, in this particular case, it's a corner property, so it has two street yards. And the minimum setback is 25 feet. Because that was a question that was early brought up, was whether the previous ordinances had a 25 foot setback. And in this particular place, this.
This is Mike again, 2041.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bill and Bob. Bill and was that Dick that also provided insights? Anyways, thanks those that all helped answer my questions. It more so sounds like there's three conflicting codes and if you look at it from a side yard, this works to the homeowner's favor if they want to upgrade their property. So that seems like there's, yeah. Couple avenues there, so that helps, but.
But in this case, it's a corner lot, so there's actually two street yards.
Sure, it's two, so it's two street yards, but then you also have another ordinance that you can look at it as a side yard and a, and a front yard. Is that what I understood from Bill? So now we have the ability to classify it in several ways?
Well, no, if you apply, if you apply this code, so this, this house has two different addresses or used to have two different addresses. The current address is 20, 2207 Caesar Street. And I believe the old address was 2407 Julius Street.
Seems something like.
And so, if you actually look at the property currently, there is no, there is no driveway or front door facing Caesar Street, which is the, the current policy and the signing addresses. It's that your driveway or your front door be facing that street. And, and it has a lot to do with, with, with emergency calls and, you know, people, emergency services being able to get to that house. But, you know, and I don't know what the policy was back then when, when this house was built and when the, when addresses were assigned to this property.
So, and, and this is Mike again, 2041. Bill, you, you said rightly so earlier that we're not trying to address the future variances or possibility for variances, but with regard to this number four, for future unburdening some for future tenants or whatnot. Or usability of the property, I guess. Although again, as a neighbor, within the same footprint, I mean, I'm looking at it out from my window here outside my house and it seems okay. I just, again, the safety standards. I think Bill and others on the board or whoever decides to make a change. If for whatever reason there was a safety incident here, you guys would be the ones to have to answer to why you thought yes or no. And I don't think it means just following what the ordinance says so that.
Actually, this is Bob Green. I disagree. We are very, in terms of what we make our decisions on, it's a very narrow window. So, safety is not one of those issues. What we do is this strict interpretation of the code, so do appreciate your comments, but I'm not liking the direction you're going in.
Okay, yep, no, sorry, I, I was just going to say as a neighbor, if it was two-story, it would, would be okay. And I was just wanting to address the future ability to put a porch. So if, if there's a decision made on this, that, that may just be the condition, a conditionary, conditional statement.
Appreciate that. Pat?
Yeah, I think, Bill, did you say this came into existence, this ordinance, the 25 feet, I thought 2006?
So the current code was adopted in 2013, but Bob just got a call from previous, that was.
Street yard had to be 25 foot setback on the previous set of codes.
I, and I think where that developed from, just a sense, that came up when they were trying to put in new subdivisions and people were trying to skate in at 15 to 20 feet off the street. And so they made a code that said it'd be 25 feet from then on.
Sure.
And I think if you got the history, that, that's what you would see. Because we had a lot of non-conforming homes in the village.
Yeah, that, that's still, I mean, I, I understand that. I mean, I know that 25 foot setback is definitely something that is now desired in the current code. Albeit, I understand that, you know, some of these envelopes for owner properties may not necessarily fit that. But, you know, so that's, that's why there is a non-conforming clause because it allows for flexibility for those properties to make, to, to remain that way. But if you want to, you know, readdress your attention to that, improvements are made. This is an improvement on that. Whether it's in the footprint of that porch or not, it's an addition. It's a change from porch to livable space, you're adding another floor to that. So it is indeed a change. And verbiage or the letter of, of our ordinance states that before they can make that change, that they need to approve these items that were discussed and discussing tonight. And so, again, you know, I understand and I respect the conversation around why the setbacks are the way that they are. But again, I must recommend that this board make a decision based off of the current status.
I don't want to say we're going around circles, but I think we're repeating some of the same information a second time. So, before we move to the last part of this, which would be possible action, let's go into the discussion. I'm going to call each individual and see if there's further questions we want to go forward. Dick, since you're.
You want to just close the public hearing session or just enough to close the public hearing session?
Oh, certainly, certainly. I wasn't aware we were actually public hearing. I was just a moderator. We've always unofficially logged it.
I know, public hearing was with that, he did have that down as number one, number two.
Well, my apologies, we kind of moved into, certainly closed the public hearing, my apologies. We kind of moved the thing, the whole part in. So, yeah, Bill's work, we kind of do the same thing, because somebody has a comment, you just let them speak. So we're done with the public comments. We're, at this particular time, into discussion and possible action on the petition from Mr. Ken Stotts for an area variance from sections 84.29 Sub G, 84.73 Sub D of the village across 20 minutes of quote ordinances to allow intrusion to the street side front yard at 2207 Caesar Street, across Kansas. We've heard a lot of information being presented to us, a lot of background on this. So I'm not sure that we need to have any further, but is there any further information before I go to each person that you're looking for before we move this forward? Okay, Dick, I'm going to call on you and, and see what, see where you're at on this. Your viewpoint, discussion wise. We're not going.
I believe it would be proper for us to grant the variance in view of what the law says.
Anything else? Questions, Pat, or comments as we move forward? I will call for a vote, so this is not a form of vote this time.
Just, I guess I'm still from the old school and I believe in the, the law and stuff like that, and that's what we're deciding here. But I believe that this does become, it's, I, I couldn't use the unnecessary hardship, that's not an argument. But no harm, no harm to public interest is his neighbors who are saying it's okay. It's all right as long as everything stays in the footprint. I guess that's what I have to go on, and that's what I go on is the people that live there and how they feel about everything that's happening. And you know, I, if it was in my neighborhood, we'd have 20 people here saying no. But it's just, and like I said, the house is probably 80, 90 years old. And the improvement would improve the whole neighborhood. That's just my discussion on.
Sure. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Jared?
I'm in agreeance with Pat that yes, it's going to make improvements to the neighborhood, but I don't see where not allowing them to live in this house right now. Yes, it would be beneficial for them to have this room, but in the same breath, it's, it's a kind of, it's a slippery slope. And we're, as much as I hate to say it, we're not here to, basically, we're, we're here basically to say whether you can, can or cannot do it, but we still have limitations as to how we will follow.
Is there additional information you need? Pam?
I am also doing it similar to Jared. I have been reading the legal Wisconsin municipalities site, which gives very clear examples. Talks about Wisconsin Supreme Court decisions regarding variances. And, and I won't go into what it all says, but it helps me make a clear decision, what our opinion on where this should go. It is more likely a new addition, even if you keep it in the footprint. So now we are back to what the zoning regulations require. And we could get ourselves into, you know, setting precedents for other people that may want to do similar things, especially since our town has many older homes in it as well. And we have to be careful with that as well. If we want to change the ordinance and the zoning, that's a separate issue. If you make exceptions, then where do they fit? So, it's tough. It's, this is tough because I can see both sides here.
Is there any additional information that you require, I mean?
No.
Okay. Particular point, Bob Green, I'm going to speak just basically on the area and use variance decision process. And we need to determine if all three statutory variance criteria are met. And for the area grants, we need to provide an increment of relief. If they're looking for that, we need to look at, first one, unnecessary hardship, does this exist? And I think we spent a lot of time talking about that one. I think that was our main criteria, so we won't go through that. The second one is unique physical property limitations, steep slopes, it's a corner lot. Nothing too unique about that. Again, I'm not supposed to speak for everybody, I'm just speaking for myself as my decision. And no harm to public interest, I, I think in this particular case, he said there really is no harm to public interest. So we're back to the unnecessary hardship. And I'm struggling with the hardship issue as well. So, at this particular point in time, unless there's another step, Mr. Stotts, would you like to speak before we come to a vote?
No, really, no. What I have to say, you guys don't listen anyways.
So, at this particular point, we'll do a roll call vote, since we do have one individual participating via Zoom. We'll start with you, Dick Cashwell, how do you vote?
Answering the request.
Okay, Pam, Born, how do you vote? Do you understand?
Oh, I don't understand.
Okay, Jared?
I would say decline.
Okay, Pat? I had drawn you my apologies.
I know. Doesn't matter, I would have approved it.
Okay, so no, that's fine, you have a vote, so your, your vote's approved. Okay, and Bob Green, my vote is to decline, so we do have a 4-1 vote to decline. Are there any further issues or steps that we need to take though?
So I just want to read this, the vote back to the board, make sure that I have recorded this properly. I have Dick Cashwell voting to decline. Pam Born voting to decline. Jared Dunlap voting to decline. And Andy voting to approve. And Bob Green voting to decline.
Is everybody agreeable with that? Okay.
For the line, the petition fails. So I do want to.
So what's the reason why you declined England? You want the ability to look like crap or what? That's my theory. Do you want to look nice or that?
No, I think we, basically because the letter of the law in terms of the, and I'm, actually I can't speak for everybody here.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
So, at this, at this particular point, we did concentrate on the hardship and the fact that it's not conforming structure that once it was not conforming, if you made a change to it that had to conform, we're unable to do that, that seems even more.
I mean, once you want to see a nice addition, I'm never gonna, I'm grabbing the torch.
Unfortunately, that's, that's not going to be included in the conference.
Do you want to, you know, judge here and say, and the board of, I like this board and if that whole appeal that the vote was unjustified or if it is wrong, we do have a means to appeal it to circuit court. And so if you do do that, we would surrender all our details and evidence that's submitted today to that court and they can make that decision.
The what?
To make, to make an appeal to circuit court, you have the ability to do that within 30 days. And so we would then render all the information that we've collected tonight over to the court and they would then make that decision. If you would like to appeal the decision of those.
Was that going to cost me that?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know what the cost of that would be, but I wanted to let you know that this is a way for you to appeal the decision of those.
Yeah, but that's going to help?
I, I can't say.
See, the thing is, I'm just spending, money don't grow on trees, you know?
I understand that, I understand that.
Like I said, I still can't believe you can't let me do that. It's hard to believe. It's like that house is going up on Church Street. It's less than 10 feet, a little more than 10 feet.
I will check into that.
Yeah, but they got away by that, but I can't.
Bob, do you want to take a motion to your attorney?
At this particular point, unless there's any newer, new business discuss, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Okay, I can't make a motion as you have said.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Pam? Hi, Derek. Okay, all those in favor say aye. I actually will call votes due to Zoom. Pat?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Dick?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
And Bob Green is an aye as well.
Motion, and the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.